Set the agenda item roll call. Lazo here. Montigny.
Present.
Rivas.
Here.
Shania.
Here.
Julian absent. Excuse me, excuse me. Can you have this Jasmine, this is from the TM. We're going to agenda item number three review. FY two thousand twenty-four police department budget in its total amount of four million nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. And it's the motion to submit to town council as presented.
So.
Second.
Motion by Shania, seconded by Montigny, chief.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I guess I'll start with a quick just overview and then if there's any questions. Um, so right now, as we sit, we have thirty-nine uh budgeted police officers. We're authorized to hire forty, as everyone knows. We only have thirty-six police officers working right now. Uh, three of them will be going to the academy next Monday. So our total full-time employees under this payroll or under this budget, I should say, is fifty-one, counting dispatches and civilians. The first line I'll look at, I'll take the obvious one, the fifty-one-ten account, which is our salary. It shows a five percent increase. So I'll say this, this is not due to promotions. And if you look at the fifty-one uh ten account, nowhere in there does it say second lieutenant. Um, what this is, is basically a two percent contractual increase for police officers and dispatches, which is effective uh on July first. This is step increases that we have from junior officers that are moving up in dispatches also. They're getting pay raises because they've been here, you know, for a couple of years now. This includes that eight hundred dollar retention bonus that's payable to the thirty-five police officers, not thirty-nine. There's only thirty-five that are eligible for that retention bonus and that's payable in December. So that'll be in fiscal year twenty-four. That also includes a seven hundred fifty dollar stipend as part of that uh reform bill contract. So that five percent increase to that salary account is is basically contractual obligations on the fifty-one-ten. So moving forward and again, please, however you want to do it, Mr. Chair, just let me know.
Continue. Um. Any questions, please raise your hand while he's presenting.
Question here.
Gus?
Yeah, um, I was curious about that, if you can clarify a little bit more about the uh the reform bill stipend.
Yeah, sure, I can do that. Um, the reform bill stipend is that seven hundred fifty dollar uh stipend that's built into the hourly wage. It comes down to like point zero three five cents an hour. And that's um again, all inclusive package that we negotiated with the union. Body cameras, accreditation, that type of thing. That's what the reform bill stipend is.
And the other thing I was curious about is the way that the way these um are listed. I noticed that it only has like for anybody who switches steps in the middle of the year, it only lists one of the steps.
No, um, through you, Mr. Chair, if you look down further, uh, councilor, if they're not for some reason, Munis wouldn't allow us to put them how it should be back to back. Like Shane Woodson step increase, it should be step one and then step two right under.
That's what I mean.
If you look, if you continue down, you'll see them again listed, the names are listed twice.
Oh, okay. That's not a good way to.
Oh, trust me and I, we talked uh through you, Mr. Chair, we spoke with Karen at the time who was here. And there was no way, we tried fixing the Munis issue. I don't know if the fire department had the same issue. But we could not get them to go back to back. So it's just easier to understand. I probably should have mentioned that, so thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Yeah, I'm curious enough though, I'm like Anthony Santos is step two and step three back to back.
Right, and again, for most of them, no, they're not back to back. And I I have no idea how to figure that out. I would prefer it to be alphabetized.
Yeah, that would be.
But if there was no way we could switch it, we even talked to the vendor about trying to switch it and they didn't have a way to do it. And I find that hard to believe, but that's what I was told.
Yeah, because don't, most other departments, they do.
They do. KBS used to, not to go back to days gone, but KBS was all alphabetical. That's what I was used to working with.
Seems like we keep running into problems with this.
Any other questions?
On the fifty-one-ten, then I can move on.
Go ahead.
I'll move on. So fifty-one seventeen um is part-time salary. That's uh zero percent level funded. That's our thirteen crossing guards. That's our custodian. That's dispatch coverage per DMs. Um, our overtime account, we're gonna level fund it. We're always over a hundred thousand dollars on this account. But um I don't ask for more just out of respect for the town, but I always do transfers. This is school coverage. This is anytime anybody's out at training, we have to cover uh or any any shift for any reason. Uh, the next account is uh actually training, speaking of training. Fifty-one thirty-two, that's again level funded. I'm kind of just going over these quick because they're all zero percent increases. So please feel free to stop me. The training is in service. It's uh firearms. It's all the new reform bill mandates we have to do. We did a lot less training during COVID for obvious reasons. So last, I think last year and the year before, we didn't reach that sixty-five thousand mark, but we will reach it this year. Uh, we still have a spring firearm scheduled for next month. That's gonna be a lot of money to do the entire police department. So they still a lot sitting in that account, but it's gonna be expended uh before June thirtieth.
Is this the account that you'd be doing the training uh that we were talking about at the council meeting?
Yes. Longevity actually is a minus uh nine point four three and that's essentially because we lost two senior people to a neighboring police department. So that took a little bit of a dip. Um, and then you're gonna understand too with the, I kind of skipped over the overtime part. But a lot of the overtime issues in our department, you're gonna, we have nine more full-time people dispatching. And we're doing police and fire, so our costs have obviously risen over the years. But this year, again, I'm gonna maintain that number uh due to the issues going on in the community. Uh, holiday pay fifty-one fifty, uh coming in level funded because that's what I was told to do. But if you read the um the letter, the writing under it, it says that we always have to do transfers to this account. In twenty-one, I had to do ten thousand dollars. In twenty-two, I did four thousand. You guys, this council, men and women, will see and I got a transfer coming up before the end of the year to get us through. And what happens is that's just because I don't know how many police officers and dispatchers we're gonna have working various shifts that we have to pay holidays. So it's kind of a hard uh a number to get my my thumb under, at least to keep it in control. So again, it's one fifty-four right now. I didn't ask for a request, but just understand going forward. I don't need, I'm not necessarily asking for an increase now. But going forward, next fiscal year, you'll probably see me again doing transfers because we've had to historically do them in this account. Sick leave, I know, I I can't predict, obviously. That's one of the easy ones to explain. Um, I would recommend that this goes up again, but I'll I'll maintain that zero because that's what I was asked to do. But in twenty-one, I have to increase it by twenty thousand. In twenty-two, I had to do it by twenty-five thousand. And then I, in fiscal year twenty-three, I've already had to do twenty-five thousand. And again, sick leave has been twenty-seven thousand dollars for a long time and has not increased. We've gained employees. So I'll keep it the way it is, but just understand when I come forward over the next fiscal year looking for transfers. I just appreciate any consideration with any transfers. Um, witnesses, that's court, basically fifty-one eighty-one. That um is fifty-seven thousand two hundred. We've come in low the last couple of years because there hasn't been a lot of court cases because of COVID and all the other issues. I can't predict it, but I'm comfortable with that number. The assignments is fifty-one eighty-two. That's our officer in charge. Where uh any officer that's working a shift that's not a sergeant, which that's becoming more and more rare luckily for us or thankfully for us, they get two dollars an hour more. That's our field training officers, they get two dollars an hour more. That's our stipends for cops and kids, um our IT person. Um, and our canine, which is now gone, but I'm working on a grant and some money, moving some things around to get another canine in the community. So stay tuned for that. But that's basically what fifty-one eighty-two assignments is. Sick leave buyback is good. We have no retirement, so that's zero. Um, a big number here, I see the fourteen point zero two, if you're following along. That's a contractual for uniform allowances. And basically, and again, it says it in black and white, but that's a hundred dollar increase on July first for every officer. And that's the only reason why that number jumped up so much. It's a contractual obligation. That also covers the uh civilian mechanic and our animal patrol officer. They each get eight hundred bucks uh for uniform allowances. Uh, tuition fifty-one ninety-three is is exactly what it is. Uh, it's like, it's three thousand two hundred dollars now for each police recruit to go to an academy. That's courses, that's civilian classes, and we usually spend that money every year. Um, electricity, it is what it is. Water and sewer, I raised per the town. Um, we used to say per Karen, Paul and I, but that the town told me to set it up for four percent. So the way we have it in our budget on the water and sewer isn't expected, the three point nine eight that you see. Um, the fifty-two forty-one is abbreviated. That's repair and maintenance of motor vehicles. That's, you know, when we go to salvage tire, place hillside collision and for motor vehicle repairs. Uh, data processing, you'll see that increase, a slight increase of two point eight seven. And the reason for that is our computer aided dispatch, our CAD system, which is now central square, is increasing this year. We were just told, we really thank them for that. Um, that alone is about twenty thousand dollars a year. Uh, we we pay for town clerk software, for animal licensing, that's twenty-seven hundred dollars a year. Our um internet has increased, our accreditation software has increased.
Can you hold on a second, Chief?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, Gus.
Can you just back up for a second with the electricity thing? Um, if with national, national grids, if electricity costs going through the roof, is it wise to keep it, keep it at thirty-six thousand?
That's what we were told to do during budget discussions, keep it at thirty-six thousand. Are you hearing the same thing I'm hearing? I I had that same suggestion, but I was told to keep it at thirty-six, thirty-six thousand dollars. So we are keeping it at that and we will see what happens. I thought you were gonna ask me about the solar and that is way beyond me and I thought solar was gonna come in and save the town and.
I did ask Charlie about the electric.
I know.
Gus, Gus?
I did ask Charlie about the electric just a little while ago when the rates went down considerably for starting in May. So from May until October, for November, it's supposed to be a substantial drop.
Wonderful. Yeah, good. Then maybe we'll be over budget and like the money can go back to the general fund, yeah.
That was it, Josh?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, as far as the, again, the data processing, that's a big account. And again, that comes, that that's how we function as the police department as far as computerization and functioning back and forth with the fire department. That's also our um criminal justice information machine at CGIS. We cannot do the job, it's almost six thousand dollars a year. We cannot do our job without that. That's registration, licensing information, warrant information. Our fingerprint machine, we're now mandated to send prints electronically to the state. That's a very expensive machine. And of course, we got it for free and then to maintain it and purchase new ones, you have to buy. The the state doesn't, you know, do that. They give you the machine initially out of the gate, then you have to maintain it and be responsible for. So that's all that data processing account. The uh fifty-two forty-three account, repair and maintenance builders and grounds. That's um Johnson Controls, that's our Reno, uh our vendor Reno, our HVAC system. Some of the stuff for our elevator repairs, we use uh plumbing, heating, you know, things like that for anything self-explanatory. The um let me just see what's next. Uh, copy of leases, maintenance contracts, fifty-two forty-four. That's all our contractual agreements. Right now, we have three machines, three copy machines. That's our paper, everything that comes out of that account and that's zero funded. Um, or zero increase, I should say. The uh R and M equipment, that's repair and maintenance of equipment, that fifty-two fifty-one. That's anything, like I just mentioned, contract, that's anything not under contract. That's like American alarm, that's some Johnson Control stuff, that's also elevated maintenance stuff we've used in the past. Um, the fifty-two fifty-three, the repair maintenance communication, that's um Motorola. That's some IT stuff we've used in the past. That's our uh DNR, which is uh in Connecticut, that's our radio comms repair people. Gear and uniform is zero, but I mean, that's that's what it is. It's for gear and uniform. The um specialized services, this is kind of a, you know, strange one here and I'm looking for an increase. But the biggest reason why you see the three point five four percent increase is new kennel fees. That's what I've been told by the finance department to pay those Oxford kennel fees out of. And so that's what the big part of that increase is. Um, that actually was ten thousand dollars for several years. It got cut to five when we hired a IT person. But the problem is, and and the fire chief and I have said this both publicly, um, he does a great job over here, but we have a very robust IT system in our building and in Paul's building. And one person certainly cannot be responsible for that. So that's the issue with. Um, we still have my IT person on the police side of the house who's a cop. But he's a very smart one and he does IT kind of when he's working if he can. Um, and it saves us some money, but that's why I, I mean, I know it was decreased originally to save money, but because we had a full-time IT person, but that's not it's a lot to have an IT person from the town hall to the DBW, the fire, the police, and it's just a lot to ask one person. So that is what it is. But the main reason for that increase, the three point five four is the kennel fees. That's what we're paying it out of. Um, fifty through, uh fifty-three forty-two, the printer, the forms, that's essentially at zero, but that's twenty-one D violations and parking tickets. Believe it or not, those things cost a lot of money when we get them and we spend that two thousand dollars every year for those violations. Um, office supplies, again, is self-explanatory, the reason why, but it did go up, I'm asking for an increase from four to five thousand. It's been the same for the last three years and our costs are going up like everything else. And believe it or not, even buying paper is it's, or if we don't get it through the school, we have to go to a different vendor and it just costs more money. And it's also, we are also using a lot of paper now uh through our accreditation paper uh work that we're doing. You have to have not only digital, but a paper file, which is ridiculous, but that's what they want us to do. So we're gonna have a backup to a backup and that's why I'm looking for a thousand more dollars on that. If you're on the next page, it's all zeros, but you know, fifty-four twenty-one is the copy machine, that's toner. Small printers that we have in the buildings and like the detective division, uh might have been assistant. Um, fifty-four twenty-two is data processing, so that's co- um computer software, Verizon air cards that we have in our mobile data terminals, that's laptops in every police car. That's staying the same. Janitorial in the house, uh fifty-four fifty is the same. That's obviously, it's uh janitorial cleaning equipment, things like that, cleaning. Uh, fifty-four sixty is building grounds maintenance. That's like um you know, we put mulch around the building, we do some electrical work, we go to the hardware store. We've gotten lumber at Moss Lumber to build a um another room like in our basement for accreditation purposes, you have to have a sound site barrier for certain types of evidence and high value evidence. So all that stuff's coming out of that. Uh, motor vehicle parts and accessories, exactly what it is, parts for our cruises, that's like CAP, NAPA, Plaza, things like that. That's zeroed out. Inspection stickers, it's still thirty-five bucks a sticker. That's what that is. Um, health supplies is fifty-five hundred, is vet bills. If you get a question, I see right now, I'm sorry. Um, that's uh vet bills, ambulance bags, stuff we buy through the fire department at a better price. Uh, chemicals and labs, fifty-five oh two. That's like our drug testing kits for cocaine, our heroin, or fentanyl. That's fuming equipment, that's like plastic evidence bags that we need. Safety patrol supplies, uh fifty-five oh three, although it's staying at zero, that's like taser cartridges, ammunition. And I said it last year, I said it the year before, I might as well say it again for a third time. Um, all that stuff is sky high right now. The with the way people are, you think the world's ending, but we have a hard time us even getting our hands on ammunition. And that's, it's just a a real cost. I've never seen it this high, but I don't know when it's gonna stop. Um, fifty-five ten is controlled substances. That's been six thousand for many years. That's uh for purchasing narcotics, uh doing drug investigations. Prisoner maintenance, fifty-five eighty-two, it is what it sounds like. That's prisoner meals. That's buying uh blankets. Every time a blanket's used, it has to be flame retardant per the code, fire codes, and it's very expensive and it's expensive to feed prisoners. So depending on how many prisoners we have, we usually go through about six thousand dollars a year. Uh, fifty-five eighty-seven, uh parts and accessories, non-vehicle, that's like ACO equipment we bought. And I just think about like dog waste uh boxes she's bought, speed signs, bike parts, surveillance camera parts, things like that. That's what we take out of that account. Um, the mileage is staying the same. Again, that's exactly what it is. That's our easy pass. That all depends on where the training is. That depends on which which of the six police academies in the state our people are going to. If they gotta go to Springfield, they gotta go to the Pike and it costs more money. But right now, in April, well, next week, they go to the Boylston, so there'll be no mass Pike expenses for that. Um, conferences and meetings, that, when you look at that, it's going up a hundred percent and I'll explain why. The fifty-seven eleven account, back in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we had two thousand dollars. Uh, they cut that to zero because I wasn't using it. Uh, because I was coaching football, everybody here knows that, and I was committed to that from July to like, you know, Thanksgiving or so. So I missed out on a lot of professional development. And I'm looking now to increase that to where it should be. Um, because in twenty-one, it got cut to a thousand, twenty-two, it was a thousand. Twenty-three, I got it back to two thousand, so now I'm looking to get it back, get it to more reasonable for training. And that's not just me, that's the deputy chief. That's the lieutenants, that's us going to training and professional development for when I leave, they can take over, run the place. So that's important for the town.
Is that a take into account, please reform?
This, yes. I I I as the chief have to go to other training that I normally wouldn't have had to go to.
So it's, is, doesn't seem like a lot of money.
That's what I feel comfortable looking at the cost for stuff coming up after July first. I kind of looked at priced out and I'm good with that, that four thousand dollars. One of the trains isn't gone and they're, you know, they're not really that that far away really, so um, I'm just thinking about, or I thought in my head, and obviously as a command staff, uh training, that'll be the next one we go to. Or I bring the two lieutenants, deputy and myself. They bring in like a nationally recognized speaker on policing and the way you should be doing business and running your place. So that's, that's what the conference meeting, I know people see the hundred percent and they, you know, they get a little but that's, that's why. I didn't do it for a couple of years because I had another commitment, but I look forward to doing it now. Um, the next one will be the uh fifty-seven thirty dues subscriptions. And I've had to do transfers in this, that's a five point two six percent increase. Back in twenty, I had to do five thousand bucks. Back in uh twenty-one, I had to do four hundred. In twenty-two, I did nothing. And in twenty-three, I'm hoping that I have to do anything. I got like two dollars in that account right now. But basically what happened with that is even our accreditation, the uh Massachusetts Police Accreditation, it's twenty-three hundred dollars a year. Our, the International Chiefs Membership went up. The uh Senlex SWAT is seven hundred fifty dollars. The our bid list, we can buy cruises, is several hundred dollars. Our tip pool on one line is thirty-nine hundred dollars. So all that stuff that comes out of that line, dues, subscriptions, periodicals. Um, I'm just looking for an increase so I don't have to keep coming back and doing transfers. And that's just things that I know are gonna increase after July first. That's why that's up five point two six percent. The, the electronic lights communicator, level funded, again, the office equipment's level funded, that is what it is. And the overall increase, what I'm uh here requesting or talk to is four point five percent. And again, a lot of that is uh contractual, but I, there's no real wiggle room with that.
Any discussion or questions, Chief? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. We're going to agenda item number four.
Like six.
Review the FY two thousand twenty-four fire department budget. Its total amount of three million forty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Anteem motion to submit to town council as presented.
Second.
Motion by Shania, seconded by Montigny. Chief, you're up.
Oh, good evening, everybody. Uh, a lot of the things that uh Chief Woodson had just spoken about kind of do come into effect with uh the fire department stuff, uh increasing amounts of uh contracted stuff and things like that. But as, I think the uh the big thing that you guys really wanna see is is the impact that we've had with the four firefighters uh and continuing the budgeting with them. Um, of course, that came with slides and explanations. Um, because that's the best way to explain things, gives you a little bit of data, historical data. So obviously, I'm talking about the fifty-one-ten line, that is up. Um, that is up at this point. Um, the first, the first uh two pages, obviously, is just the open uh screen for the uh the fire department. Um, and it gives you a little description of what the fire department does in uh screen number two. Um, as you see bullet item number three, uh Southbridge Fire has four working groups with six members. Uh, last year, we were budgeted uh to start in January for four full-time firefighters, so half the year. Uh, the impact in fifty-one-ten is definitely uh where you see the biggest increase uh on on the light item because we had to fund those four positions fully for the whole year. Um, page two, uh slide three, it just gives you some historical data of what we've been doing, how busy we are. I just want to make mention on slide, page two, slide number two. Two thousand twenty-two, colleague, uh calendar year. We've done twenty-four, two thousand four hundred and twelve EMS transports. That's three hundred and thirty-nine more than we've done ever in in previous years. But there's reasons for that and I'll get to that in a couple of further slides. Um, so to give you some uh historical data in regards to revenues collected in slide number four. Those are the years. Um, pretty self-explanatory, a little over a million dollars in uh June of uh twenty-one. In June of twenty-two, we collected a million twenty-two. And as you see, only nine months right now we're over with because of those increasing call volumes. Uh, there's other factors that I'll discuss a little bit here in a little bit, in a little bit. But um if you just take the first nine months, the monthly average deposit right now is a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We have three more months of of collecting that roughly a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And that bottom line, I I'm estimating or approximating about three hundred and forty to three hundred and fifty thousand more than previous years collected. Um, that's, that's a pretty good chunk of change. Um, and and obviously with the the help of a lot, a bunch of things that we've done here recently. Um, you know, obviously changing the ambulance rates, we'll talk, I talked a little bit about that momentarily. Uh, so there's been growth in Southbridge. Uh, last year, when we were presenting, uh putting together what the growth will be. The Well School at eighty Marcy Street, uh you'll see we have had fifty-one EMS incidents. We've had fire stuff there too, not so many. Uh, but obviously it yielded forty transports. So again, that equals revenue. Uh, Southbridge Rehab, since the pandemic, those are the numbers. I I, they're, they're almost tripled uh in transports. So every ambulance call, and this is all nine-one-one stuff, um no, uh transfers, I didn't even figure or factor it into this. And then again, the Southbridge Mills at five to fifteen K Street, uh we've done two transports out of there. They just opened in February. So these things that I talked about, uh, you know, a year and a half ago, um, these are the things that I said, we're gonna have more call volume. We had three hundred and thirty-nine more calls already uh in last year's and in this year, we're continuing on uh from the beginning of the year. Some changes that really helped us in collections and revenues. Uh, Medicare published all the actual, uh, an actual inflation uh increase last December. Um, so what I did with my billing company, they were able to take the the uh each call from physical, physical year twenty-two and and adapt the new pricing. Uh, so obviously, mass health, there was a thirty-two percent increase just in the math, mass health billing, which on those numbers, we've collected, we would collect potentially another sixty thousand dollars. Same thing with Medicare. Um, and again, I just mentioned the uh rising, uh raising the Southbridge ambulance rates, which could also, we adapted those rates to uh let the twenty-two call volume and that's twenty-five thousand dollars. So that alone, uh, to projected revenue just on that, which is in that three hundred and uh, you know, that figure that I mentioned at the beginning, a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars just by doing that active uh and aggressive uh billing techniques with the ambulance service. Uh, the CPE grant, I think we just reviewed the CPE grant, uh which is be going to council again on Monday night. Uh, these are the the last three years that we've collected. Uh, right now, twenty-two, hopefully by the uh middle of June, we'll collect about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, so that has added to our revenues on top of what I've already mentioned in a couple of first slides. Um, some people, as discussions at PPP, we talked a lot about mutual aid uh given versus received. So given means we go to other towns. We take care of them with the ambulance and we bring them to the hospital. We take in, we bill their insurance companies and then they pay. Um, received is, that means we were unable to do the calls uh here in town because we were the uh tapped out with the amount of calls that are coming in or the recall wasn't covered by off-duty staff. Um, you'll see the numbers are are pretty good. Um, I'd like to see on the, on the second uh July first, twenty-two, the current. Um, we could not cover twenty-five of them, uh so other towns came in and did those calls. Last year, at this, at, for the whole year, uh there was fifty that other ambulance services came in and did those calls. So the impact of the seven guys has really, really done a a great deal of uh service for the town. Um, the last, the last uh page, the two slides, it's just kind of a synopsis of everything. Uh, increase in the staffing is a lot more consistent coverage of the fire station, decreasing response signs who provide better protection to the citizens. Uh, the EMS call volume has increased with additional calls coming from eighty Marcy Street, uh five to fifteen K Street and increased needs of Southbridge Rehab. Um, I I, the rehab thing is really kind of important because it's just not Southbridge. It's, I hear scanners everywhere, the the Masonic home, the, everybody's call volume in nursing home care has increased almost double, just like ours. So I don't think it's gonna go away. Um, so that's kind of, you know, we continue at that rate of doing that many calls a year. Uh, the third bulleted item is Medicare. Medicare rates have increased. We increased the Southbridge rates. And we also will be continuing the CPE program. So again, that bottom black bolt uh in that uh slide number nine, that is my estimate this year just for increased revenue by July, well, I'll say June thirtieth of this past, of this uh this year. Uh, so we're moving forward. Um, of the fifty-one-ten, the sec, the last, very last slide, uh, the the fifty-one-ten is a, is a over a hundred and twenty-eight, one eighty-one. Um, all of that one twenty-eight um comes out of the one twenty-two, a hundred and twenty-two thousand is the four firefighters for the second, for the six months. Um, so we paid, we did a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to do them for six months last year. Now I had to add the other six months to it, so just for the firefighters alone, it's one twenty-two. And just like Chief Woodson explained in his fifty-one-ten line, uh the remaining monies, the difference in monies is uh contractual agreements with collective bargaining, administrative uh potential increases if we go to, if you guys go down that road. Um, that's, that's really, I I think that's one of the most important parts. I wanted to explain to you guys. I've had people, you know, question it. Um, so that is the increase for fifty-one-ten. Any questions? That was a lot of information.
Any questions?
Um, and Gus, is this, I, cause I'll, I'll show Shane how to do this. Is this how you want these uh lines to be with the separate steps?
That's what I, that's kind of what I expected. I don't know why his department didn't. Every other, every other department does, so.
Well, I will say they have a new girl working in in the executive uh office over for Shane too, so I don't know.
I think it was something, I think it was something with Christine Hen, didn't quite understand the system.
Yeah, we, I do this.
His office or what?
I input all this stuff myself, so that's why I said that. Um, salaries, salaries and wages was fifty-one seventeen. Uh, that is our call department. We have currently eight uh call department members. That's a good amount. That's zeroed out. I don't foresee that need, that need to go up any higher on that. Um, uh fifty-one-ten, which I don't know if you, it shows up on your page, but that one should be scratched out. That was a, an account that we previously took out of, out of the budget. Uh, fifty-one thirty, overtime. A little bit of an increase on that, and the way I. And the way I evaluated that was it's due to the collective bargaining agreement, two percent increases and potential changes in the, in the schedules one and five, if that does get approved. Also, it's pretty hard to, difficult to predict. Generally, I use historical data to give us a budget item, but this, again, is just, it's just above, over two percent on an increase. This is all the stipends and the different things that all the department needs if you want to read through all those.
Through you, I thought the reason for hiring the four additional firefighters is to cut down on the.
So, so what, through the chair? At this point, the overtime, we've, we had these guys on for six, six months already. We have less call going out, more calls are getting covered because we have the staff in there. I don't expect the overtime to go down much more. But that is one of the reasons that, you know, this is hot to run the business. We want to make sure that we get the calls answered is really what it comes down to. I can tell you, we've had an increased amount of first alarm responses over the last several months. Last week, we had five of them because of brush fires, out of control. We've done multiple first alarms, which actually brings in about seven people each time we do it. That's a good chunk of change every time we do that. So that's the way our rent cards are. So yeah, overtime really kind of needs to stay at that point because that's, that is, historically, is what we've been doing.
Well, I would recommend you take another look at that. That's why we hired the four additional firefighters. That's all, thank you.
Employee benefits. This is the cancer screening program that we have through the collective bargaining. Every year, with the six members, at eight hundred and fifty dollars, that's a zero, no changes on that. Longevity, longevity, we've added, some movers, some members have moved up in steps per, per the years of service, and we added new one, new member at the very, the second on the bottom, Mr. Strooper. He just, he's just getting his ten years next year. That's longevity. Holiday pay. So at the beginning of July last year, we were not fully funded for the four firefighters to start working with Karen. We did a transfer, I believe, right in, I think it was shortly in July, of about twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars to add to that, to cover holiday pay as we move through the year. So that brought our, our full line item to a hundred and three, two hundred. Again, with the increases, there's a twenty-six percent increase because there's additional monies needed to cover. What I expect, like Shane said, sometimes this is funded pretty good. It all depends on who's working, what steps, a group of guys are working within, within the department at that time. Some of the younger guys could be working the holidays, so the whole, the holiday is gonna be a little bit lower. If we have a group of people that are more senior, of course, they're maxed out, the holiday amount is gonna be a little bit higher on that paid-out holiday.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Chief, you got an extra holiday, too, don't you? It's June, June thirteenth or something?
June teeth, yes, through the chair. Juneteenth was added into it, so that's the other part of that twenty-seven, two-five-nine. It's, it's, I'll be honest with you, just looking at it, because we just had a holiday this week. We got twenty-seven thousand dollars in there right now. Right now, I have three more holidays left. I may be looking for a transfer towards the end of this, this fiscal year also. All right. Did I answer your question?
Yep.
Assignments. So a good majority of these, again, are all collective bargaining agreements. The yearly stipends for EMS levels have gone up. That in itself went up nine, nine hundred, nine thousand, two hundred dollars. So that takes a good, good chunk of what the increase is. We also, through the CBA, added a new fire training officer. That's at overtime. And again, you know, like I said, the collective bargaining, bargaining agreement, two percent increase across the board for any of the overtime that is done there for the, for the firefighters that help us out. Uniform allowance. Uniform allowance, obviously, was a, through collective bargaining, was a hot topic button on both sides. Right now, we pay all firefighters, full-time firefighters, eleven hundred dollars in a one lump, check, one lump sum check, very similar to what the police department does. Karen, Haron Oss, and I, and again, in July, did an increase from, last year's original budget was twenty thou, a little over twenty thousand. We brought it up to thirty-one-nine. This year, there's an increase because we have, there's an additional increase because when the first, the last five full-time employees were hired, they, for the first year, they only get half of their uniform allowance to start out. So it went up to thirty-six, eight fifty, and that includes five, thirty-one full-time employees for the eleven hundred dollars and five new full-time employees at five hundred and fifty dollars. So I have to account for that five hundred and fifty dollars. That is a, if we lose somebody and I have to hire somebody, I have to put more money in this account at a future date. If, go ahead, if that happens before, before the end of next year. So any questions on that one? Tuition, in the description line, those are the actual amounts. Tuition is Deputy Hewl is doing master's programs. Firefighter Morton is also doing master programs, and firefighter Thomas, who's a fairly new guy, he's in an associate's program in in college. So that is the actual amounts of, I worked with them pretty seriously on trying to figure out how much they were gonna be requesting for reimbursement, and that's the actual figure. Electricity, there's no changes, as like, like Shane had said. I wanted to put it up higher, but Karen told us at the time not to do that. Water and sewer, I did increase because right now, our quarterly bills over the last year, except for the one with the water leak, has been, and the quarterly bills have been eight hundred dollars. So I increased it to thirty-two hundred dollars. Eight hundred dollars times four is thirty, is thirty-two hundred dollars. So that was the increase on that. Fifty-two, forty-one, repair and maintenance of motor vehicles, that unchanged, it's still a zero at thirty-three thousand dollars. Motor vehicle repairs, inspection stickers, body shop, front end alignments, brakes. The DPW, one of the mechanics does a good majority of it, so the labor is, there's no labor cost, so, but we do have, we do get the break on the labor, but other things do have to be sent out to, like, Leno Ford. It's pretty much where we bring most of our stuff, and then another vendor, Spencer, for fire truck repairs. But we do very well in that. It could be one tire away from going over that amount of budget. Fifty, fifty-two, forty-two, data processing. As, as Chief Woodson explained, internet, computer-related contracts that we have, very similar to what, what he has over there, emergency notification system that we, we get through townwide. All of these things have gone up either five or ten percent in, in cost. And so I'm expecting an increase on all of those things. So going up to twenty-six, twenty-two, two hundred and twenty is, is a, is a good number to be sitting at. Repair maintenance of buildings and grounds. This goes for the HVAC system in the building. Climate event, which is the diesel exhaust system, power products, which is the generator out back, pest control, because we have holes in our station. And the air compressor, those are all gonna be zero, no percentage increase on those. Copiers and lease and maintenance contracts, just like Shane said. We're a busy department, we have to make photocopies for, for people looking for reports. I'll be honest with you, is that the increases, we, we need the increases because obviously, we've been doing a lot of printing for the fire station project. If you see Deputy Hewl, when he comes here for a fire station, he's got like packets of paper all the time. We're passing it out to seven or eight members that's on, on that team. So increased costs on that for toner and contracts. Fifty-two, fifty-one, repair and maintenance of equipment. These are, again, our cardiac monitors, which is that LP fifteen cardiac monitor and the cardiac compression device. Those are very expensive contracts. They're maintained once a year. Company comes in, they replace all the batteries, they give us new ones. And this will also, is an account for equipment repairs, appliances if we need them, hood inspections, and also annual stretcher maintenance, which, which comes out of that. Repair maintenance of comms. Right now, the repair maintenance is, is needed. As we have broken radios, I just had someone drop off a radio in my office the other day. The knob is completely sheared right off after a brush fire. It's, it's six hundred dollars just to send it to the depot at Motorola to get it fixed. And then above and beyond a cost on that to, to repair that. So that, that is still unchanged. Rentals and leases. So we order oxygen for all the ambulance, actually, the entire department. This is equipment rentals for medical oxygen and gear and equipment rentals. So that's two thousand, that is unchanged. Gear and uniform, a little bit of explanation on this one. Years passed when, when an employee would leave, or, so we have had some retirements. We would recycle a lot of the people's gear and give them till that ten-year mark when we have to replace it. Five, the last five employees, we got, we actually got a couple, a coat from, from Charlton to put someone through the Call of All Academy. So this year, my goal was to get those five people and continue with two more sets of gear in our cycle that we have to replace gear over the ten-year period. I took thirteen thousand dollars from the fifty-eight, fifty-six account, which is towards the back of it, and moved it into this count to make these purchases of gear. Right now, the, like I said, the four or five guys that we have, they're wearing gear that's close to the end of their life, and they don't have a second set of gear. So we need to do a little bit, a little bit of surgery to finesse the, the years, gear purchase, and this will really help us out moving forward. Special services, like Shane said, IT support. IT support is important from our department, obviously, because we have HIPAA rules that we have to apply, apply for, for the Medicare, Medicaid with the ambulance software. It's called, this is cell phones, air cards, stationary learning system that we pay for annually, door access, I am respond, I am responding app that we use to respond to calls in American alarm. So that's unchanged.
Can I ask a question? On the specialized services, under actual twenty-twenty-three, it says twenty thousand, five hundred, ninety-six dollars and seventy cents. And administration, we wise, twenty-twenty-four is seventy-nine, twenty. Do I get the same document as you?
Let me just, please do the whole page, I mean, the full page. So don't forget, and like Shane said, they, Karen took money out of each of our accounts to start up the IT guy. She took my, took it out of my IT account, special services.
Right, but it seems like you spent twenty thousand last year, and you're only getting seven thousand this year, seventy-nine hundred.
So that is a good amount, seventy-nine, twenty. To be honest with you, because this was the previous year. Karen took out about eight thousand dollars to, to, to start up the IT professional here in town hall.
All right. Seventy-nine is good enough.
Yep.
Fifty-three, forty-two.
Print forms, letterheads, printed envelopes, ambulance forms, run sheet, stationary, that's unchanged at eight fifty. Obviously, with the change in station location, we're probably gonna have to start, maybe in a few years, change that up a little bit for new stationary. Office supplies, unchanged there, twelve hundred dollars. This is routine office supplies, pencils, pens, all those things and paper. Just like Shane said, the cost of paper has increased like dramatically. The school department does give us paper at a pretty good price, but sometimes we, we need it a lot, they don't have it, or they, they, we will go out and get a sale at W Mason or one of Staples, and we'll buy it from them. Fifty-four, twenty-two, data processing supplies, this is supplies for computers, adapters, chargers, covers, and cases if something breaks. This actually will, will work with, I have, we've been working very closely with the IT director and, and another grant that we're getting, but he's been really, really good in, in helping us out with purchasing computers and things like that. So that, that is unchanged. Materials, building and materials, maintenance improvement of building. This is still four thousand dollars, that has unchanged for quite some time. Most of you know that when the fire station, the doors, we use a lot of lumber when we come down to the fire trucks pulling it out. The, the mares still do hit occasion, and they take, take off the stripping off the side or any other general work that needs to be done in the station. We go to Morrison by lumber and nails and things that we need. Janitorial supplies, again, and you heard this at my transfer last, last week, things are just cost that much more. Twelve hundred dollars is a good figure to go with. I do manage, like, right now, there's a stop order on buying any toilet bowl cleaner and, and things like that, but we'll, we'll continue to move forward when, after that transfers takes place. But this is a good number to be, for us to be at moving forward, because I don't expect costs to go down all that much. Building and grounds, materials, same thing. This is for paint, wallpaper, door maintenance. We do have a front door that is, that's, does get attention occasionally because it is metal and it gets used a lot. So that, that figure can stay, you know, it's a good amount to be at three thousand. Motor vehicle parts and accessories, this is batteries, tires, filters, other motor vehicle parts. You know, and we increased this by, actually, no, it's zeroed out, so it's eleven thousand dollars. We're gonna stay healthy at that amount because that's, that's where that needs to be. Health and beauty supplies. It's drugs and medicines and health supplies for the EMS division. This, this has not gone up in like two years. Although prices are going up, I wanted, just because of the, the town, we want to make sure that's, you know, I give you a good number in the budget, but we may, at the end of twenty-four, may need, and when this budget gets closer, because the costs are going up, twenty-four, five hundred is where we need to leave that at. Chemical and supplies, these are for laboratory chemicals that we use for testing our meters. We bottle gas in meters that gets done on a monthly basis, so that's where that money comes out of. I just ordered two of those bottles the other day because we're, we're, we needed them. Training materials and supplies, this is all for CPR classes, you know, for fire, EMS, hazmat, CPR, and first responder programs. We do a very, very good job working with Harrington Hospital and, and outreach and, and getting groups of CPR and, and things like that, and SAD, semi-omnich defibrillator training for, for outside, along with ourselves, so that, that is supplies that we use for that. Fifty-five, eighty-two, that's safety supplies, batteries, hand lights, portal radios, pages, pass alerts. All these things need maintenance, and they need to be replaced when they're, when they're broken. Twenty-five hundred dollars is a good amount to stay with that as we move forward. Parts and accessories, non-vehicle, so this is repairs, those parts for the Scott Packs, portable pumps, generators, lawnmower, excuse me, we don't have a lawnmower, but we do have a snow blower, and chainsaws. We probably have twenty chainsaw, twenty gas-operated pieces of equipment, chainsaws, fans. So this, this is, again, where, this probably will be a request for a transfer later on, but I think without changing the budget too much, twenty, leaving it at twenty-five is a good number to stay at.
Water pump.
Water pumps, yes, water pumps, too. License and permits. So this is annually, our, we get a, and I'm waiting for it to come in. In the beginning of May, we usually get our CMed invoices. So I need, because of our increased call volume last year, I know we probably have to do a transfer this year. So moving forward into this budget, the CMed dues is, I'm thinking we're still gonna stay at the same amount of calls or more. So we get charged by CMed, which is the radio in the back of the ambulance where they can talk directly to the physician or the nurse in the hospital, tell them what's going on with the patient. So we get charged every time we pick up their radio, make a connection to the hospital. And so that's gonna be more money. So maybe twelve thousand, I need that increase because I think we're gonna end up needing more. Mileage and in-state travel, no changes there. We don't usually use that too often. We've had a few people reimburse for tolls for meetings and things like that. Conferences and meetings, last year, I increased this quite a bit, or actually, the previous year, because we do a professional development, very similar, a lot of these things are very similar to what Chief Woodson explained. This includes mail tickets for employees for town business and our annual F-CAM Professional Development Conference. I send, I send, generally, the deputy and myself go, and I have alternated between the lieutenants that we have going each year. So I usually, the four of us go each year, and that's about how much it costs to go through. Furniture, furniture and furnishings, it's five hundred dollars, no changes. I don't really want to buy any chairs this year, Mr. Loz. But I'm, I will have to. And safety equipment is the, with the line, I took the thirteen thousand dollars from moving forward, which reduced that amount from sixty-three to fifty thousand. So try to keep it within the budget to make the changes needed with internally to get the gear purchased. That's, that's, gear is up to five thousand dollars per set, and I, I'm expecting another increase. But overall, our budget, my budget increases, you know, eight point four-two percent with a calculated figure of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Again, a hundred and twenty-two of that is the salaries for the full, full timers.
Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
So just thinking about our, like, all the, the conversations around the drone. Is there anything in here, like, for repairs, or what is, just thinking about, there was a lot of conversation around that.
Training, training insurance.
So yeah, so there is, there has been some activity with the drone. Here's the. Uh, here's the quick description. Michael McCall, last year, when the drone was pushed to the side and locked in my office, we talked to, we first went to, uh, our insurance carrier, Maya, and they said, if you don't have a piloted, a trained pilot for the drone, don't insure. Uh, until you get that training completed and you have a pilot. Uh, deputy, I do know, is just finishing up. I think he's at the point to take the online test for the drone. Um, and then we have another young fella who's on the department that's really kind of that old gamer guy thing. Uh, he will take the training after that. The training is only a hundred and twenty-five dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars, and I have that internally in the budget. Once, when that is, uh, fully insured and approved, we will come back with a protocol or policy to, to, to advise people, you know, this is when we're gonna use the drone in these particular areas. You know, and we can use them with the building officials, the police department. And immediate dispatch, you know, we can deploy that thing pretty quickly. So that's pretty much the quick update, I'm just waiting for the deputy to finish the training, we'll insure it and get forward, moving forward with the meeting on that.
Any questions?
I agree with you, Mr. Shane. So your total budget increase was how much?
Two thirty-six, three twenty-one.
For next year?
For next year.
And you've increased probably this year projected three hundred and fifty thousand more in revenue from the ambulance along?
That's correct.
So we're at a positive based on the additional fire.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If no further discussion, all is in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Thank you, Chief. Moving on to, uh, Budget Number Five, review the FY two thousand twenty-four inspections budget, inspection department's budget, in the total amount of hundred and eighty-three thousand, seventy-eight dollars, and enter a motion to submit to Town Council as presented. Bear motion. Motion by Montigny, second, like, Shane? Michael?
All right, as you all know, this is my first budget meeting. So bear with me, I'll get through it the best I can. I have Kayla here with me, um, she's put together a package. Our budget stays pretty much the same except for salary and wages. We were looking to move Kayla to full-time and the packet that she's handing out is a justification of her work and duties as well as, you know, what I do, to justify making her full-time. I don't know if you've talked with Daniel, the head of the Board of Health, but he's looking to split the two departments. He wants Board of Health separate from building, which means it'll just be Kayla and I. We cannot man the phones with Kayla part-time. She has to be there full-time, the phones ring all day long, every day. We also have inspections that need to be done that haven't been getting done due to the fact that we don't have a second inspector, which we will be bringing a second inspector on and hopefully in July, which is all paid for by the CBD G grants, um, which we used to have. And he, he had since left and he was never replaced. So we will be looking to replace him, so we can get back to doing the one-ten inspections of all the apartment buildings. Uh, we can go through the pamphlet that Kayla handed out first to justify the couple of the line items in the budget, if we wanna do that.
Go ahead.
Manager sent out a letter today to the PBD Subcommittee and in his letter, he recommends that the administrative position in the construction inspector, or maybe I'm reading it wrong, eliminate the unfilled construction inspector. Okay, I'm reading it wrong. Right, I'm sorry, I'm reading it wrong.
Okay. All right, so what Kayla printed out was a, a day-to-day, um, of her activities, and what she expected of her, in her position as a part-time employee. She handles all the deposits, processing of the permits, um, included but not limited to the following, missing information, tax signatures, um, she also answers public requests, contracts, permit status requests. She handles all of the building electrical, gas and plumbing permits, not just the building. Annual inspection paperwork, all the vacant property paperwork. Uh, she closes out the permit processes, um, including but not limited to sending out letters, scheduling, et cetera. Currently attempts to keep up with the building permit closeout letters. The state requires, anybody who pulls a building permit, the state requires us as inspectors to send out a closeout certificate at the end of the project saying that the project's been closed out and inspected, um, which is a lot of paperwork that needs to get done to process all of this. She needs more time currently to send out the letters for gas plumbing and electrical, work being done without permits. Currently, our electrical and plumbing and gas inspectors are part-time. So it's very hard. I can't catch everybody under the building. I do catch a lot of the building, I do catch some of the plumbing. Usually the gas and the plumbing, I catch when I go in to do an inspection for other things. We do follow up with the letters when feasible or when we can get to them. Public records requests. Recently, we acquired the Hyman Room downstairs. They're gonna let us use that to put border health files as well as building files, so that we can try to get more organized with past, um, building permits as well as border health files. By law, we are required to hold on to the building permit applications and anything to do with the building permit forever. We cannot dispose of them. Hopefully this will save us some time once we can get it more organized and we can work more efficiently through that. She also answers the voicemails, answers phone calls throughout the day, uh, assists the public with the permitting processing. Uh, a lot of times we get homeowners who don't, you know, are unfamiliar with the process, they need it all explained to them. Understanding what's required of the building permit. Uh, she's working, doing some of the zoning setbacks, she's gotten pretty familiar with the zoning now. And generally filling out whatever paperwork is needed on the administration side for the permits. She preps and sends out the letters for, for me, um, which works pretty good. As I find violations, I call them into Kayla, Kayla will do up the letters and usually by the end of the day, I can get back and get them signed and the next morning Kayla gets them out in the mail. Uh, she handles the zoning violation letters as well, um, working with our permit letters, the dangerous building letters. She prepare, uh, prepares completion certificates, um, which are the col, uh, part of the closeout process. Files necessary paperwork receiving for the building department, insurance letters, business certificates, uh, formal complaints, the zoning determinations, uh, schedules, meetings and et cetera for me. Uh, assisting the public, filling out the complaint forms, uh, and gaining the proper information, updates, inspections and tabs on the website as well.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to speak to this a little bit. I spoke about it at the EHS meeting, um, as I said, uh, Daniel's looking to kind of split the two departments back up. When I did meet with Daniel beginning the year, the, there were very little things that he felt that the office needed, but the one of which was to make Kayla's position full-time. And it's kind of been something that I've been a pretty big advocate for, uh, when talking to counselors for the majority of this, uh, year. And as most of you know, I grew up in that inspect, inspections office and when Nick became part-time, a lot of the inspections became part-time. And then it has come back to full-time and, and this is a very good piece of information here that you've given us, because it shows that it really, the position really does need to be full-time. And so what Mr. Shenier was saying before, it does say, I am not recommending the request to increase the administrative assistant position in the inspections Department in the paragraph prior. And, and, and I, I respectfully disagree with the town manager's recommendation there. Um, I, I can appreciate that he is looking to help cut budget in certain situations, because we're going into having a fund of fire station and other things, uh, in the future. But I, I personally can't recommend this budget without that going to a full-time position, because I, I think with the school system being in receivership and, and deterring people and businesses and families from coming here, when you come into this town hall, it's the economic development, the health department and the inspections department that you are met with first. And those departments, to me, are the first impression that the people who are trying to do business in the town, this town get. And we can't, we can't leave them under-equipped, in my opinion. Uh, so I just wanted to state that for the record and I, I do support your request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you hear new?
Yeah, I did see that from Charlie today. I agree with what comes from Montigny says, and I don't know if this would be proper, but I would like to make a motion that this subcommittee recommends to the town manager to fund that position full-time. Would that be in order? I know we can't.
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah, I, I'll entertain that recommendation to the manager, considering that the manager took it out of the budget.
Right, because I'm, what my concern is, is that he's going to submit this budget to council without that position. And if we don't have a recommendation to go forward with this to him, to at least give him what we feel and then hopefully give full counsel, uh, how we feel to vote for that position to fully fund it. I think it's important. If he wants to look for ways to, uh, fund that money and move money around, I would recommend that they eliminate the part-time position in the manager's office and move that position probably over to inspections. You know, look at it that way, because I'm, I'm sure what she does and the manager's office is redundant to what some of you do and I, permitting for carnivals and, and events like that. So it would be added, but if you want an idea on how to look for ways, I would suggest that, eliminate the part-time position in the manager's office and move that position over to inspection or fund the front position. So I'll make that into a recommendation that we, uh, su- suggest to the town.
I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call it a, uh, an amendment to the main motion.
Okay.
So the motion to recommend?
There's a mo, there's a motion to amend, to recommend to the town manager, um, to go with the full-time position.
Right.
Okay.
So I'll so it over, um.
So you second it?
I second it, okay.
Now, discussion on this position. You had your hand up first.
The town manager is the one who recommends the budget.
Correct.
I think that if the town manager recommended this, then that's what we should stick with, what the town manager has recommended. Who decided they're gonna split up the department? Did the town manager decide that?
No, no, there was.
Somebody named Daniel decided that? Daniel wasn't deciding that. The town manager decides whether he wants to split up that department, reorganize it, whatever. So I think if the town manager recommended it, then we should stick with what the, the town manager recommended on this one, only because I'm looking at the budget for this department and it's quite high, higher than a lot of the other ones. So if you want to fund the funds for this, fine, but other than that, if the town manager recommended it, then that's what I, I suggest we stick with.
Gus.
I want to add that, uh, to, in regards to what George was saying a few minutes ago. Um, at GenGov, when we were talking about the town manager's department, um, he did specifically recommend getting rid of the part-time in his department. So that, that, that job doesn't exist, um, as of the coming budget. And, um, I'm actually inclined, because I remember back years and years ago when the, the town manager at the time reorganized this, this particular department into one department. And I think it does make, probably does make a lot more sense from the, from the point of view of how much needs to get done in the community and all the issues that, that Mike is dealing with, to probably separate them again. I would like to know, um, Mike, when, have you, have you finished the, um, the, um, the, uh, building, uh, commissioner training stuff?
So I took the prep course, which is what I just finished.
Yeah.
I do still need to take the test, um, which I guess I'm gonna have to take it on my own time, because there's no time in the day for me to take that and still do everything that gets done.
Because you probably need a forty-five hour day.
You know, this position, when I was first hired, there was three inspectors here. I'm doing the job of all three of them, including, you know, picking up the slack with border health, because a lot of times I go out and do the housing inspections with the border health too. If they don't feel safe going into somewhere, I go with them.
Yeah.
So there's only so many places I can be.
Oh, I totally, I totally get that.
You know, and I appreciate your input, um, I really do. We put together some numbers, um, in justification as to what we actually spend our time on and what's coming in money-wise versus, you know, the amount of work that's getting done in the town and permit, you know, the money that we're bringing in with the permits as well, which is only gonna be amplified once we get the next inspector. We have to, we have to be doing these one-ten inspections. It's the state law, we haven't been doing them because I just can't get to them. The only time I can get to these, what should be caught under one-ten inspections is when they're coming as a complaint through the fire or police department and then I have to prioritize. So if I'm prioritizing to go do the one-ten inspection because of safety issues, then other issues that are less minor or minor issues aren't getting resolved.
Are we talking about amendments or are we talking about everything?
Well, the thing is, the amendment, the amendment is to justify the full-time position. The question of what he does has a lot to do with what she does. So I'm allowing a discussion on the full-time position because of the workload of what he's been explaining. And Gus asking the question about the detest has a lot to do with the operations of that, that department. That department, to me, when they put it all under one and, you know, the gentleman's along with us, that's where the problem started. Go ahead.
It was even beforehand.
Okay. Well, I'll yield, because I've already spoken once, but I would like to say something else.
Joe, you next.
Well, no, I'll, I'll say something, but I'll let them speak.
Okay.
Well. No, okay, then I will say this. Um, Mr. Julian, I have no disrespect for you, but you've been here three years and he still has not passed the test. We had to bring in someone else to look at Sacred Heart because of that. So I would, I have no problem giving him, he's asking for his own salary, six percent raise. I have no problem with that, but I think it should be on him passing this test before we go any further here. Because to me, it's long enough now for someone to pass a test. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. For you, uh, I agree with the previous speakers, Councilor, uh, Montigny, especially if we're gonna hire another inspector, it's a lot of paperwork, a lot of phone calls, a lot of schedule. Uh, with the gas and electrician and a lot of building, new building coming up, a new project, a lot of blueprint to be studied by, uh, the building department. And, uh, I think, uh, it's an important department we're not focusing on, we leave her, uh, uh, we're not paying attention. And this is what move a lot of, uh, new project, a lot of new, uh, businesses, a lot of new things, because, you know, if he doesn't sign, nothing will be open. If he doesn't review the plan, the permit wouldn't be issued. And I can see what he's concerned, you know, one hand on flat. And, uh, the border has helped to have enough work to do and, uh, I can see Mike struggling. So I think it's a good idea to move on and, and, uh, change that to full-time, not a part-time. Thank you.
Jasmine, then Mike.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I do agree that it is an important department and I do think that we need to look at and see. I wanna hear from the town manager to see, you know, why, um, he recommended not funding that position. Um, but also what would that look like if we do fund it? Where else are we gonna take the money from? So I, I wanna see what that looks like. Um, but I do agree with the previous speakers, it is an important department and we do have a lot of growth and we need to look at that and see what that might look like.
Mike, then Gus.
Thank you. Um, I can't speak for the town manager, but I, I can imagine, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no other new positions, I think, in this budget. And I think that might be where he's, mine might be at. But I just, if I could guess what Daniel means when he says he wants the place to be split, I think he just means that when the part-time employee is not there, the health department has to, then, you know, take care of some calls for Mike. I don't really think it's like the actual splitting of the two departments. I mean, we're here at PPP and we did the other budget at EHS, so it is split. Um, I mean, he's down a couple inspectors, there's a clear need for this. And I, I mean, the fact of the matter is, it's one inspector in a part-time position and I don't care how you cut the departments, it's just here before. you cut the departments, it's just here before us, and, and I think it really needs to be full-time. I have seen this for many years, and it, we've always talked about in the department head meetings, back when I was a department head, that if you cut this to part-time, it's going to be very hard to bring the whole department back. And I can see we're here struggling with it now, but there's a clear need, I mean, you're, so what Councilor Dow said is right, that you're, this department is, is struggling because it's not equipped, and you can't do it. Like, this is a department where you have the beginnings of lots of different projects, and, and that's what we need to be able to push forward in this town, is new things, new tax dollars, that will justify very quickly with the success of this department making it a full-time position.
Gus.
I'm just a comment, can I go back to what Mike Markey was saying? Is that, I mean, I think he does have a point where if, if this does qualify as a department reorganization, the manager does need to do something with that, because that's a charter thing. Because that is how it was originally combined, it was a department reorganization. That was years and years ago. This is even, this even predates Andy Pelletier. I think it, I think it predated, I think it was Jim Warren that was the director of that. And this was back, maybe even a year before I got into council, it was a long time ago. And, and once, so, so, but I still think it's an issue, and I, I'm still, I'm still in support of increasing the posts to, to full-time. And we do need to figure out how we're gonna fund it, because the way the charter is written, we would have to do a two-thirds vote unless we're rearranging funds from someplace else to increase the budget. That's why the charter.
I just, just caution, the council can advise the manager that this is a priority. Then the manager can readjust the budget with the department.
You can do it, yeah.
We, we, you know, working the budget, I mean, we can't cut anything here tonight, but we can go over it to better understand it, deliberate it, and then when we go to the council floor with recommendations, this came out as an amendment of a recommendation to go full-time. People are making valid pushes in favor, the revenue part of it is, is a big part of it, the revenue could ju, if the revenue can justify the position, you know, then it's a no-rener, but this is something we have to work with Charlie on. Once we get out of subcommittee, we go up to full council.
And also to clarify, according to the budget, I just wanna clarify, is the twenty-one thousand eight eighty-two that's here, is that the full-time pay salary, or is that some current part-time?
It's two-part. The way I'm reading it, it's two-part.
It's written as two-part time, so the combination would be the full-time.
But I really hate the way this gets lined up, because it's really difficult to believe the way, the way it's set up, so. And also, just as an aside, if, coincidentally, if Gill ends up getting elected to council, he will lose, he will lose two inspector slots, because he'll, he can't be doing those jobs as council.
Right.
Just by coincidence.
Not part of the agenda.
No, it's just.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, for you. Daniel, he's not the one who came up with the idea. Before, before even Daniel came to the picture was talking about it, he wanna split the department. It's not, Daniel came up with the idea.
Well, let's, let's understand what they call split a department. They made the health inspector and the commissioner one position. Nobody's splitting the department. They, the, the position, it disintegrated on its own, and what happens is, building should be the building guy, health is the health guy. That's not reorganizing the department. I think the, the position itself, and it was, I thought it was a disaster, but moving forward with the person not in the position anymore, and then all of a sudden we have a pure building inspector and a pure health inspector, all of a sudden it's starting to work better, as far as the public, you know, when they go into big business inspectors, the positive that you're getting back from the inspection department. But when he describes inspecting blight areas or buildings like three-deckers, that's a whole nother league compared to just doing the building permits. Okay, and it's state law, and we're violating it because we just don't have the manpower at this time to do it. Never mind the paper trail that when it comes to the state, has to be all documented in order to legally go to court with something or deal with it, so, you know, that, keep that all in mind when we talk about this position. Are you all set, Gus?
Yeah.
Now, you all set?
Especially when you ha, you added our second inspector to do the building. I mean, there's a lot of paperwork, a lot of scheduling, and Mike, you need enough time to review all these blueprints on the AO and all these big building coming up.
Mike?
Just wanna remind the councils that you talk a lot about cutting, so now is the time.
George, Chenye.
I didn't know if I caught it, but what, what revenue comes into your department?
All right, so on the paperwork that you were given, we have a breakout of the building and electrical, gas, and plumbing revenues, could that come in? From, we did it in a five-year span, only to minimize the amount of paperwork. From two thousand fourteen to two thousand and eighteen, it was fifteen-nine million eight hundred and fourteen dollars and four hundred and thirty-three fifty-six in estimated work done in the town, which brought in a permit fees of four hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-two fifty-eight. From two thousand and nineteen, which is when I was hired, to two thousand and twenty-three, the work done in town was ninety-eight million three hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and forty-one oh one, which brought in a total permit fees of nine hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven eighty-five, for an increase of twenty-eight point, I mean, increase in the permit fees of one hundred and eleven point four percent.
So with the, that's up until now?
Up until now, yes. That's just the building.
With your two thousand twenty-four, do you anticipate more fees coming in with, with buildings?
It's gradually been going up, so I would say, I would have to say yes. The actual percentage of the increase, I couldn't tell you. It all depends on the economy.
I just look at it, having the person put at full-time, it would increase our revenue and probably pay for the position itself, and.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
But I saw that you cut a lot.
Right over here. Anybody else on the amendment? You have no further discussion on amendment? All of the favor? Opposed?
No, I'm for you.
All those in favor? Opposed? The unanimous of all present, very good. All right, we have an amendment that, that's recommended. Now, please continue with the rest of your budget, friend David.
Okay. All right, so our budget, getting to the actual budget, we pretty much stayed equal across the board, except like I said, for the salary and wages. For the salary-appointed personnel, it was equal across the board at twenty thousand twenty-five dollars for one, and twenty-three thousand two seventy-two for the other. I don't wanna give out the names, but then our two assistant inspectors, both gas and wiring, they get a stipend of eight twenty-nine each. Waits and measures, there, I did notice there is a mistake on this paperwork, they have Mr. Provost down there, and it's not, it's Mike Como. Yeah, so I just wanna make note that that is a mistake on there. Mr. Como approached us earlier in the week, or end of last week, he wanted to move his budget. Hannah had asked him to be at tonight's meeting, but he's away on vacation and couldn't. I don't know how we wanted to integrate that, but he wanted the, the budget to go from, or salary to go from forty-eight twenty-three to eight thousand, with a hundred dollar a week gas stipend, I mean, a month gas stipend, not a week, a month. He's not here to speak on that and where he came up with his numbers. I don't know how you wanna handle that moving forward, but we'll just keep moving through. The salary and wages, this was for Kayla. If we decide to, to make her full-time, it would add twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two to the budget, but as of right now, she's budgeted at twenty-one thousand two fifty-two as our part-time employee. The next line item would be the, another local building inspector to do the 110 enforcement, which is one hundred percent funded through CDVG, which is twenty-five thousand. The car allowance for Billy, for the electrical and the gas and plumbing inspector is three thousand, we kept that the same. And the gas allowance for that, per Schedule Five, if the gas exceeds three dollars per gallon, then the gas allowance would go from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five per month. As of right now, it's at a hundred. Repairs for, maintenance of motor vehicles is fifteen hundred, and we kept it at fifteen hundred.
Mr. Markey?
Chairman, for you, last year, this was at six fifty, I believe, and Pelletier came forward and said he needed new foreign tires, so he increased it to fifteen hundred.
Yep.
So I'm going to presume that you don't need foreign tires every year. You need bricks.
No, the tires were replaced, and the tires are fine. We just kept the line items equal because that's what we were told to do. So we kept it equal.
Well, I would think that you could cut it down a little bit, since you're not replacing the tires. That's why he brought that forward. That's why he increased. So what I hate to see is somebody increase it for a specific need, and then they never take it away, they keep it at that same increased cost.
And when we go to council, we can discuss that.
All right.
A lot of recommendations in the manager.
Thank you.
Gus?
Yeah, two points. The one is, you mentioned the CDVG-funded inspector. Where does that actually stand as far as actually hiring somebody? Because that's been in limbo for years.
All right, so we had discussion, which we've never got complete resolve on, about making that a full-time position. Peg was looking into seeing whether or not we could get that full-time position paid by the same grant. That will start in, in July, so that position, we were gonna try and hire in that position for the first of July.
Okay. So has the hiring process actually started, advertising any of that stuff?
No, we were advertising, but the last, the grant money that was set aside for last year ended up being used for other items, so the grant money was no longer there, so we took the ad down because we weren't gonna advertise five months early, hire somebody, and then have no money to pay them. So we took it down, we're gonna run it closer to July and try to fill the position. In the meantime, Peg was gonna see if we could get it a hundred percent funded through the grant and, and bring him on full-time.
Okay. The other question I had is, with, as far as the car allowance goes, is there any, isn't there any law having an issue with allowing these people to simply to file for mileage? Would that make, I don't know if that would make more sense from, from their point of view, or budgetary point of view, or both? I mean, I think the federal, I think federal mileage is like fifty-five cents a mile or something like that.
Fifty-eight, yeah.
It's fifty-eight? Thanks. But somewhere, somewhere not this in there. So I don't know if that would make more sense, and as opposed to giving them mileages, you know, a mile, mileage allowance based on what the cost of gas is, as, as the way it's written.
It's a point to be discussed, I mean, I think.
I just don't know which, which would be better from a budgetary point of view, so. I mean, that would mean that they would have to, they would have to file for whatever the mileage.
Joe.
For you, I, I think sometimes that would have to be like Christine, because sometimes it goes into how they're paid and how it's reported to, with their own benefits through, like state of time and all that, so could be something how that is, is allowed. Mike comes into the compensation.
Right, yeah.
Order for retirement purposes and all that.
All right, so moving to prints and forms, it was at three hundred, we kept it at three hundred. Office supplies was at seven hundred, we remained at seven hundred. Miscellaneous materials was a thousand, we kept it at a thousand. Conferences and meetings was at eleven hundred, and we brought that down to six hundred. Dues and subscriptions was five hundred, and we kept that at five hundred. And then the small capital gains is zero, and we kept it at zero. So the overall increase was eighteen point three four percent.
Any further discussion? I just want, just for the members and, and people, the discussion on the full-time position at secretary, or whatever her professional title is, I know that one, some council could say, well, we could cut this, so we could, I think some of the budget we have to keep in mind is maybe prioritizes, the word to use. What's more valuable, what's more bang for the buck? Is this better than that? I mean, we've got a lot of departments and a lot of money in the town budget, and I agree with what you're saying, but again, keep your open mind when you go to the meeting with the manager. And the manager will recommend, and I mean, we recommended to management, I mean, we cut, and, I mean, increase is done one way, cuts done the other way. So going forward, I'm, I'm open-minded for this position. This position could turn into more money flow to that office. I know how that office works, I'm in the field. So going forward, we'll look at it, once it gets up to council floor.
Well, that's why I, what I suggested about maybe we could, or the manager could take his part-time position, because Councilor Markey mentioned that at General Gov, I think.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
And, and they just wouldn't allow it, they just pushed it forward, that, really, they didn't wanna bother to have a discussion about it the other night because of confusion with who can take money out and put it in. But when he brought that idea up, and they explained what that position did, was permitting. They did permitting for carnivals and things like that, as an added thing was just to move that money over to the border health and maybe even take some of that responsibility. I don't know, that's not for us here, but that's, that's what I, why I thought this is when Councilor Markey brought it up.
No, I, I think there's moving parts here, and I think there are prioritization, what the council thinks is most important. Subcommittee's to deliberate and recommend, and then we're gonna have to take it up on the floor. Gus?
Let's only clarify, George, if you look at the town manager's proposed budget, he has a line for salary wages part-time, which is the job you're referring to, as this past year being twenty-three, one twenty-five, it's been zeroed out, it does not exist in the budget.
No, no, I, all right, so, but I'm just saying.
So you can't, again, let's go back to what we're talking about. We can't do that, because that position's gone. But the council can come up with creative ideas on how to do it, if they want this position to be full-time. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, just a point, yeah, we're hiring a town manager very soon. We're, we're hiring a town manager pretty soon, and I think at that point in time, that council should address the town manager and say, this is something that we've been talking about for some time. Unfortunately, we have an interim town manager right now who's done an awesome job, but you're asking him to start making moves that maybe another town manager wouldn't do down the road after looking at it, including the town, new town council from July. So I got, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Anything else? Joe?
For you, Councilor. So was it two positions eliminated, one part-time?
There are two full-time, there's Gabe and Hannah, and then there was a third part-time where that office has, hasn't been built for a few months now.
But there's one part-time, they're looking to move to full-time, is that?
The one that's, the one that's part-time, looking to move to full-time is Kell.
Okay, so the part-time, so one part-time position was eliminated.
Yes, yes.
Upstairs.
Town manager, yes, upstairs.
It's because there's nobody in the position.
Gotcha. They quit, and they never built it.
Any further discussion on this agenda item?
I think about two weeks.
Main motion has been made, all of the favor? Opposed? The unanimous of all present. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, have a great night.
Thank you. Review the agenda item number six. Review the FY two thousand twenty-four public safety budget in the total amount of two hundred and twenty thousand. Entertain motion to submit to town council as presented.
So, second.
Motion by Chenye. Montigny. Discussion.
My only question, and so maybe you could enlighten me, is that we have a lot of electricity costs in everybody's other departments. ABW, there's some for the school, everywhere. And then we have another several one here for streetlights. But we just voted on other departments.
Just enlighten me, that's. But that's been a screwy budgeting thing for years and years and years. It's never made any sense why they don't put them together, but they never have.
Good suggestion in next budget session.
So then, where are we standing with that aggregation? Does anybody know that's, is that gonna help the town?
It should eventually, I mean, the process hasn't even been, or it's just barely begun negotiations yet.
Right, we haven't got out of that one, we haven't got out of negotiations.
So this is for streetlights in the whole town? And then out of that, each department also has streetlights?
No.
No, but this covers the streetlights that are on.
Streetlights, just streetlights.
Yeah.
The departments have their own electric bill.
And some of them are currently covered by solar credits, whenever that gets negotiated.
Didn't the town just buy new streetlights? Or in the process of buying new streetlights, going to LEDs or something? Didn't they pay a couple hundred thousand bucks to blow the bill down?
I know we discussed that, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Counselor Adams.
We did discuss it, I'd have to go back and look at it. Then we have to move all that stuff.
Electric company is doing that process now, slowly, but they're doing the changeover now. And I thought it was because the town elected to purchase LEDs.
LEDs, yeah, that was when Heather was here.
I think there's, I think there's two different things going on is that we, I think we may have agreed to do some sort of LEDs. I don't recall if we ever, I don't think we agreed to actually purchase lights. Because there's two different things going on. Some towns decided to own their own streetlights, and most towns don't. Because they would rather have the grid or whoever is running their system be responsible for maintenance.
Maybe I should have been more specific. I think the town voted to change the lights over to LEDs, not so much owner.
I think we did, yes.
But to change the light over to LED, to lower the cost to the electricity of using those lights.
I believe we did, yes.
Counselor Dow.
For you, I don't think the street, the school, the, all these lights at the school, not the, not the streetlight in the town.
Yeah, town.
The school. The budget, they're referring specifically to the streetlights.
I guess nobody knows whether we did or not.
No, I know what I did.
We did, we did do them at the school, yeah.
I know the school's been done, but I'm talking about streetlights.
No, we never did the streetlight.
Let's look into it, we'll answer the question. Right now, we have the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We're not shutting the streetlights off this year, so I guess we'll have to budget it. And don't laugh because one year we did. Back in the day, we just shut off certain streetlights and save on electricity. That's how tight the budget was. Any further discussion on agenda item number six? If no discussion, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. We go on to adjournment.
Hold on a second.
To add, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present.